Anytime, Chair.
Perfect. Welcome to the June 16th, 2025, meeting of the Wayzata Planning Commission. I hereby call this meeting to order. My name is Blake Cameron and I am the Chair of the Wayzata Planning Commission. First on the agenda tonight is roll call. Director Sharp, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Schwalbe. Commissioner Ankeny. Commissioner Planton. Commissioner Sieverson.
Here.
Commissioner Elg.
Here.
Commissioner Van Loy.
Here.
Chair Cameron.
Present. Thank you, Director Sharp. Next on the agenda tonight is approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Does anyone have any questions or proposed changes to the agenda? I'm hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Loy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ankeny. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. If the ayes have it, the motion passes and the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of one item, which is to approve the Planning Commission report and recommendation for 1022 and 1042 Wayzata Boulevard East, the PUD Concept Plan. Does any commissioner have any questions or comments on that item? Or wish to pull the agenda item for further discussion? Director Sharp?
Chair, if I may, two additional public comment items did come in after the public packet was published last Thursday. These are on your table for review. They are in the official packet in the rear of the room and they will be shared with the City Council with your report and recommendation and entered into the public record.
Perfect. And I would like to just pull that item real quick off and for further discussion and just move it down to shift everything south one, so move it down to five and old business will become six. I don't need a motion for that, do I?
Chair, no, I think you could just go. I mean, it's next on the agenda.
Right. I was just going to roll right into it.
It's a single item.
Yeah.
So go ahead and take it up with your colleagues and then ask for a motion after your discussion.
For sure. So really, all I wanted to do was, I just wanted to correct my own record from last meeting where I incorrectly identified when I was summarizing the public comments, I incorrectly identified that all of the comments were positive, when in fact, two of them were positive and two of them were negative. And I just wanted the record to reflect that.
Thank you, Chair, for noting that. And I would also note that I think at the next meeting, you'll have the draft minutes from that meeting and you can make sure that your comments are accurately reflected in that. I always appreciate when you all read those minutes and make sure everything that's said is accurate to your recollection.
Perfect. So that was the only thing I had for that, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Sieverson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Elg. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Next on our agenda tonight is old business, but seeing that there is none, we're going to roll right into our public hearing item. Tonight's public hearing item is a tree preservation ordinance amendment for Chapter 936 of the City Code. We're going to lead off with Director Sharp with the proposed changes from the city.
Thank you, Chair. My mic had been turned off. As you stated, this is an ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission is reviewing this evening. However, it has a slightly different path than a traditional ordinance amendment would take, so I will try to update you on what the history of this ordinance amendment has been. As a resource, we have our city forester Bennett present for questions to be able to answer specifics about the tree preservation ordinance that he ends up administering on a day-to-day basis. And additionally, he's been the primary staff member and liaison with our golf courses users and owners here within our community. And so just wanted to make the commission aware that Bennett is a resource and we've asked him to sit in on this meeting to offer his skills and provide us with a little bit more context where needed. Just to give you some background on the tree preservation ordinance as a whole. In October of 2022, the city adopted the original tree preservation ordinance. I'm not going to go through every bullet on the slide, but there were a number of benefits and goals out of that tree preservation ordinance. As is common with significant new ordinances, there's tweaks to language that you learn once they are being administered. And until they are fully administered, they cannot be to the highest level that they otherwise would be. I've always referred to this more as a living ordinance or a living document as it grows with the community. And that is the case of what we saw here with the tree preservation ordinance. We came back in 2023, really hitting some of the nitty-gritty of standardization of interpretations. We'll have some additional ones that we may bring forward with a DAVI tree study that's coming forward at a later date. So just understand that the cities, when we adopt a significant ordinance like the tree preservation ordinance, learns from its use and tries to make it better and understandable for all users as we bring it through. In the case of this ordinance amendment, I'm going to speak at an extremely high level to the history of the Woodhill Country Club request. We do have representatives present this evening that would be able to answer specific questions about it. And Bennett was, as I said, the closest staff liaison with what that process has been, what the goals have been, and what interpretation staff has attempted to make to allow this ordinance to work with multiple different kinds of users. So to start with, pre-planning meetings occurred for Woodhill Country Club and a project that they are going to be proposing that I believe starts sometime here in the summer of 2025. This project is pretty substantial and has a large capital outlay and a long-term plan for Woodhill Country Club. In moving forward, they met with, as you can see, the city forester and other city staff numerous times to try to discuss how the ordinance would affect their site. Unfortunately, due to the nature of the way the ordinance was written, which is pretty consistent with other communities and even within our own ordinance, an ordinance may not be as amenable to all sites and all types of uses. It was largely developed for single-family homes and the development of commercial sites. Large tracts of land, particularly golf courses, which are a unique use, but a substantial land mass within Wayzata, may present additional challenges to that ordinances, but also additional opportunities. In May of 2025, the Woodhill Country Club was able to petition the Wayzata City Council at a workshop session to essentially try to explain their case for where the current ordinance is not meeting their needs or their expectations for a tree preservation plan. Notably, part of their plan was to remove significant numbers of trees potentially before they were becoming hazardous. By their definition, they might have already been hazardous and because that determination is not an exact science and is an imprecise one, that can cause difficulties when administering the ordinance for both Woodhill Country Club and Wayzata Country Club here within the city. What City Council found and directed staff to study and bring back before the Planning Commission is essentially the ordinance that we're going to be proposing before you this evening. They cited unique land use of the golf course as a potential reason for why they would do this. Significant acreage within the community, particularly that that acreage tends to be heavily wooded with a large number of significant and heritage trees. And also noted the fact that both of our golf courses in Wayzata happen across jurisdictional boundaries and the burdens that that may place on an operator trying to meet two different cities' ordinances while they are trying to manage their site. With that, they really directed staff to come back with something very quickly that was understandable due to the timeline presented by Woodhill. Thus, you're seeing the Planning Commission being asked to take action if you are willing on the same evening as the public hearing. You'll see that I have other actions that you're able to take as well, which would certainly allow the Planning Commission to ask to take additional time. So I don't want to state in any way that the Planning Commission couldn't ask for additional study and slow things down. The directive to staff from the council was that the study move along as promptly as we are able, under the understanding that exemptions be carved out specifically for a golf course user and narrow that focus to a golf course user with the potential to expand that into larger institutional-type properties in the future if needed and if presented. With that, the draft ordinance provision before you this evening essentially presents two paths for a golf course user to seek an exemption, just outright full exemption from the tree preservation ordinance. The first, staff felt compelled to include an administrative path that would kind of incentivize a user to prepare a tree management plan. In other words, a large management plan for their entire site over the life of their site in a significant, almost comprehensive plan-like document for how they were going to manage their site in the future and have an aspect of that include a tree management plan. The second, depending upon the timeline and what an applicant would seek, would be for them to come directly to the City Council and petition for an outright exemption from the tree preservation ordinance. That then would obviously require scheduling on a council agenda and would need to meet certain thresholds, but would not go before the Planning Commission. One of the other provisions that staff ensured we included within this is that if the land use were to change from a golf course, the exemption would lapse and change in ownership would lapse and they would need to come back and present their case again in either instance. But again, one would be administrative and one would be through council direction and action. We can certainly go back and linger on any of these steps, but as you are evaluating the actions this evening, essentially, staff has presented three different actions that the Planning Commission could take. To approve the draft Planning Commission report and recommendation as presented, to approve it with minor amendments and specify what those minor amendments are, and then to prepare staff to provide a revised report with significant amendments if needed. Additionally, if the Planning Commission so chose, they could direct staff to provide additional study, but we'd want very high-level specifics on that due to the directive to make things move in accordance with the schedule outlined by Woodhill Country Club. And with that, Bennett and I would be available for questions. Additionally, a representative from Woodhill Country Club is in the audience and would be able to answer specific questions about their intentions for their site.
Thank you, Director Sharp. Commissioners, anybody have any questions?
So if you go back to a couple of pages, it says the Woodhill's concerns were project costs, staff burden, tree risk, and tree planning. So is that part of the discussion that's going to happen after so we can get an understanding of what their concern is versus the current tree ordinance?
Commissioner Van Loy, if you're seeking some of those additional details, that is why we've asked Bennett to be able to participate in this discussion so that we could go into, rather than a 30,000-foot view, dive in a little bit deeper. I haven't been privy to two years' worth of conversation, and so I want to make sure that we have the resource available for you. Do you have any specific questions or Bennett, would you like to provide a high-level overview?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioners. Would you mind providing the question once more?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, let me say it this way. From 10,000 feet, the golf course has an awful lot of space, right? And an awful lot of trees. So I'm not sure I understand what is getting in their way, right? And what they're really asking for in terms of a differential versus what the standard tree preservation ordinance is.
Sure, sure. Yeah, good question. I think the biggest obstacles that we've discussed with them really are the project costs, and by that we mean things like tree replacement escrow. So the ordinance requires that if the tree removal that's described in a proposal crosses a certain threshold based on the amount of trees on the property, then there's a certain amount of replacement required on-site. And that's all calculated. There's various formulas and it's all based on the diameter inches of each of these trunks. And you get this number and that number needs to meet a number of conditions dealing with, you know, diversity of the planting and appropriate species and stuff like that. But whatever that final replacement plan is, it's backed by a replacement escrow. And that escrow is released over a three-year period based on the condition of these newly planted trees with the goal of having them all, you know, become established and contributing to the canopy. So that can get quite expensive, especially with a larger project. So right now, the fee schedule describes, I think, $330 per inch of replacement. And it's released gradually, but you don't get it back entirely until three years after the project's been completed. So it's a big commitment financially. And if you're not doing any replacement, then there's a fee in lieu of replacement, which is similar. It's $300 an inch right now. So the burden is about the same. Obviously, the main difference is that you're not getting that money back.
Right.
So in terms of project costs, that's the big one, but also, you know, staff burden, it's a different kind of cost, I guess, you know, if you're committing many hours to compiling a tree inventory or getting risk assessments put together or just pre-planning, just generally with city staff. So that is a cost for sure. And then they have had concerns about tree risk and what constitutes a hazardous tree. Our ordinance does define what that is and a hazardous tree is not subject to a lot of these requirements. But if it doesn't meet that standard, then it would be considered either a significant or heritage tree and you would have to deal with those replacement requirements and the burdens that go with those. And then the planting, you know, there's obviously, especially for a bigger project, the tree planting can be a whole separate undertaking, you know, a landscape plan, finding space for these trees. You know, if you have a big, say, a 30-inch oak tree, that would be a heritage tree. So you would be required to plant 60 inches of new trees. So each of those types of removals requires a lot of property if you want to do all of your replacement on-site. So those, I think, have been the main sticking points. As Mr. Sharp said, there's been a lot of back and forth and dialogue, but I would say those are the main points and there's probably others, but yeah.
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Van Loy, the other resource available within the room that might be able to help elaborate and explain in their own words would be appropriated during the public hearing to have Woodhill speak if you have specific questions for them. Just one note, they aren't the applicant within this. This was directed forward by City Council, so they would just be another member of the public speaking as this is a citywide ordinance.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, can I ask? So I'm confused. Are we here to amend the ordinance or are we here to give a specific request to an applicant?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Sieverson, what City Council directed staff to prepare was essentially the study of an ordinance that would exempt golf courses from the tree preservation ordinance. The Planning Commission--
Altogether.
Altogether. Whether that be, A, through an administrative process by preparation of a tree management plan that is then approved by the city forester, or B, not preparing that plan and simply going before the City Council explaining their case concerns and seeking that exemption. It's an odd configuration in that way, but that is what was sought and what City Council had discussed and directed staff study the preparation of.
Then that would impact, like you said, there's two golf courses in the city right now, Wayzata and Woodhill Country Clubs.
That is correct.
And I'm assuming there's no other land available to make another golf course in the city, so really would be exempting those two entities from this.
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Sieverson, that is correct.
I don't know that it-- It doesn't exempt them, though. It gives them a path to--
It doesn't automatically exempt them. If they were to prepare either of the two alternatives, it would.
Right.
And yes, go ahead.
Chair and Commissioner, I just, you know, the actual changes are pretty simple and straightforward. You can see them in the packet materials on page 19. They're highlighted in red. So what Director Sharp has been describing is right there and it's pretty straightforward. Like you said, there would be two paths for a golf course to essentially request relief from some of the regulation of the ordinances. One is going to council. That's the first paragraph you see there on page, looks like 19, but page five of the draft report and recommendation, where owner goes right to council, makes their case as Director Sharp said, and council can impose conditions on that that are consistent with public health, safety, and welfare. So if they like, yeah, you get exemption, but you got to follow a plan or you got to do A, B, and C, then council can impose those things. And presumably, that would be part of a discussion that the applicant has with council. Then the other path is highlighted below as a new number seven there. You see that? And that's, you know, if they put together a tree preservation plan that's much like any other landowner would and the city forester reviews that and says, yeah, this is a good long-term plan for this particular type of site, then they wouldn't have to pay those tree replacement requirements, do the escrow and that sort of thing. Does that make sense?
Yes. Now, both of these properties join with Orno, City of Orno. So what happens? Is it just like the parcel of the property that is on the Wayzata city grounds that we would care about? But what if they're doing, like just cutting a few trees on our property or on our land, but the rest of, like everything else? Like, I guess, are we looking at this as a whole or is it--
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Sieverson, you're hitting on an excellent point that City Council also noted during their discussions. And I believe that Woodhill was trying to note, because their sites, our golf course sites in the city of Wayzata, fall into multiple jurisdictions, they are subject to Wayzata's tree preservation ordinances and any that Orno also create. They do not need to be the same, and that is one of the encumbrances or burdens that Woodhill was attempting to express as a reason for why they would like to prepare a plan so that both cities could essentially adopt those plans or seek exemption from these ordinances so that they would be, and seek that directly from a city council so that they would be able to manage their site without needing to consider where the more arbitrary line of the city boundary is in relation to their site.
And Chair, if I may, you know, I just interject to be very clear. Wayzata doesn't have authority to regulate property in Orno. So in other words, our ordinance would apply to the part of the golf courses that fall within our jurisdiction. But I think the larger point is, if you're a golf course in two jurisdictions, it's more challenging, more burdensome to handle two sets of regulations. I think that was the point that was raised at the workshop. I guess my question is, do we have line of sight to what Orno does? In other words, is it a tree preservation plan that they could, from an operational standpoint, develop one that could bring it forth to both cities? Or are we proposing something that would be yet another thing that Orno is not doing?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Van Loy, I don't want to speak completely out of turn. What I believe Orno has looked at is modeling some of their ordinance after us, but less stringent. Ultimately, I don't know that they are complete with their tree preservation ordinance at this time. City Forester, you know knowledge at this time?
No, they have consulted with me regarding, as they develop their own tree preservation ordinance, I don't know where they're at in that process. And I don't know how similar those standards will be.
Their ordinance is not yet complete. So ours is years further along.
Thank you.
Is there-- Sorry, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Is there any concern that we should have that exempting these entities would mean that there aren't rules for them? Like, they would either have to have a plan with the tree management plan with our city forester or the city council? And so therefore, there really aren't a set of rules or requirements? Are we comfortable with that or is it something that we should be considering that it's a little bit more unclear?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Sieverson, yes, again, you're hitting on all the top points this evening. Yeah, personally, as a staff member, I do believe that there could be some concerns there. However, we're starting to get to that line of where best practice and policy are grayer. And when there's something very clear, I feel compelled to inform the commission and City Council as to what staff has researched as best practices. In this instance, we are starting to go towards the policy aspect that council and Planning Commission provide staff with some of the direction. And that is a little bit of a gray spot we're in with this one. This one went through a slightly unconventional means of going to City Council at a workshop first before the Planning Commission sought, rather than an applicant applying to amend the code, bring it forward to the Planning Commission, which would see it before the City Council in that instance. And then you would provide your report and recommendation on what they proposed, and then City Council would weigh in on that. So this one is a little bit unique in the way that it's come before you, which is why I've tried to provide you with some of that history and context. But ultimately, the zoning ordinance, which is where the tree preservation ordinance lives, is under the purview of the Planning Commission. And therefore, you are within your full rights to express any concerns or express any reservations or express your heartfelt support. This is-- This is a understanding of the challenges, but it's also brought about slightly by time and the concern that there's significant projects that they're looking to undergo that are affected by the current ordinance. So that would be something that I would look to the parties that are present to be able to explain.
Question?
Chair and Commissioner, if I could just sort of follow up on that too, in the point that Commissioner Sieverson's raising. I do think the administrative path that's described, the sort of lower change there, number seven, where a golf course would work with a forester, still requires a lot of the same process, review, a plan, that any other landowner would. What it exempts them from is the financial burden, potentially, associated with having so many trees on a property that they have, you know, atypical considerations as a golf course. It's recreational, they're managing it differently than other types of properties. So the administrative path still requires a lot of regulation review. And the City Council is more wide open. I would say that council has a prerogative to say, hey, we need to see a plan to know. But council doesn't need a plan. It's not required under the ordinance and they could impose a condition, but that's not required either. So I think the way I would think about this is, you know, it doesn't make sense from your perspective to give the City Council that much discretion to make that call. Is that a good way to handle this situation?
Question. So I think I'm understanding, based on what you just said and what I heard previously, the two areas in red, depending on which way we go with our recommendation-- the two areas in red, depending on which way we go with our recommendation, only one of those two statements will prevail? Or both will be there?
No, no, Commissioner, Chair, both those would be an option to the applicant.
Or it could be neither. Or it could be something else entirely.
Okay.
That's what, this is, the what's in red is what the Director Sharp and his team have put together in terms of, at the direction of council, in terms of, here's a solution, because council directed them to pull a solution together. Our job is to say, we like this solution. Both of them, yes. We like one of them, we don't like either of them. We want to go totally off base, and our recommendation is we do something entirely different. So it's really just to assess what's been put in front of us and say, do we think this is really, given the context of, of, of the, of the case for change, right? Do we think this is the advisable way that we would recommend city council approach this? Does that make sense? My off base?
Chair Cameron, you are correct.
Okay.
And I, I would note, I owe thanks to the city attorney. The exemption presented where a tree preservation plan needs to be prepared and evaluated by the city forester is essentially the best practice threading the needle that staff has tried to take of, we've been directed to study an exemption, how would this go about happening? Well, there's blanket exemption, that requires city council action, that requires making your case to them. We've tried to incentivize that tree preservation plan by bringing forward that best practice management of, okay, if we were going to look at exemption, what would be staff's suggestion for how that could be achieved while still meeting the intent of the ordinance?
So from a, one more question I have. So from a process standpoint, if, if number seven becomes part of the ordinance, ordinance, is that, did I say that right? Is there, is there a process for variance? In other words, if something doesn't come, can't come to agreement, would there be a potential for a request for variance that would come, come before first the planning commission and then the city council?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Van Loy, excellent point. Yes, because it's within the zoning ordinance, it would be subject to the same variance provisions that a setback variance would be, or where a fence could be located. Chair, the city forester would like to provide a clarifying...
Sure.
Yes, so I, I think the, so there's these two different paths towards exemption here, and I think the second one, that's shown as B7, that, written this way, that is actually referring to an individual project, because it uses the language tree preservation plan. I think probably what we should, if I'm, if we're all on the same page, I think it should read the tree management plan approved by the city forester, and that would apply to the property and its management as a whole, not, not regarding a particular project. So this language, as it's written, would, would apply to, you know, a permitted land disturbance project or something like that. If it were to read tree management plan, that would, that would apply to the property going forward.
Just the journal.
Yeah, Chair, if I might just interject a little, little staff discussion here, city forester. So is the tree man, like, you're suggesting we should replace preservation with the word management? And is that, that a defined term in the ordinance, and if so, where?
Thank you. That is, the tree management plan, I do not believe is defined. The tree preservation plan is, and it's basically defined as being something that complies with the standards that are described in 93607, maybe?
Yeah, right. And you're saying it should be something more than that?
Well, I guess it depends on, on what, what's appropriate. You know, one, one would apply to a particular project, the other would act kind of in a similar way that I think that, that council exemption would. Kind of an, an ongoing exemption that wouldn't be specific to a, a specific project. If that makes sense.
Well, I, I guess what I'm reaching for, Chair and city forester, is, is trying to be clear whether, whether staff would recommend changing that word, preservation, to management, and if so, how staff and applicants would know what the contents are for a tree management plan.
Director Sharp, can I put this as a personal research project for you when you have a second over there? To see if we have...
Chair, yes.
Tree preservation plan defined?
Oh, we do have tree preservation plan defined.
How it's defined?
What we...
We don't have management plan.
Right. I think that's clear, but, but I think to Bennett's point, the difference between management and preservation, there is a difference, right? But depending on how we have preservation defined, right, could matter when, in terms of going in and defining tree management plan as well. Also, I'm curious about what, how, what, how tree preservation plan is defined.
Yeah, I think Chair, as, as our city forester pointed out, tree preservation plan is defined in the ordinance, in the definitions section in an 07. Management is not, and I would want it to be, my point.
Yes, yeah, for sure. I was just curious of how we have tree preservation plan defined, though. That's my question.
And you'd like an explanation of that?
Yeah, just a brief one. Or find the applicable section of code and throw it up on the screen.
Yeah, there's, it's not a, a huge list, Chair, but I, I would say it's, a tree preservation plan is generally, it's something that describes, usually overlaid on a survey or sometimes a standalone document. It describes what tree protection measures will be put in place during a project. It describes what the removals are. Generally, there's going to be an inventory of all the trees on the property, some specifications regarding how damaged trees are to be treated. And also, the landscape plan is sometimes included in that. Sometimes that, the landscape plan is a separate standalone document, but oftentimes, all these tree-related items are included and presented as, as that tree preservation plan. Something like that would check all the boxes that you would see in 93607. There are certain areas for discretion in there, in, in terms of what staff can approve, but generally speaking, those are the key points.
Okay.
So under the definitions, it refers essentially to the 93607 section. And rather than read you a small paragraph, I'm going to provide that as a supplemental for you to review.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Well, isn't there an element of this, however, that would still want us to be concerned about tree preservation? Seems that that word would be appropriate. We're just exempting them from the ordinance in an effort to make it more economically feasible. Or are there other reasons?
Yes, so the tree preservation plan ordinance language that was in there, apologies, that I, I was under the belief that we'd had the correct language with that. So we're trying to like, take a look at this as we're here. The management side of it within the language, we don't have addressed, and without a definition of that, it would likely include the word preservation and tree man, tree preservation plan within the definition of a management plan as a part of a tree management plan, based upon the way that, that the city forester is describing. So rather than be the project-specific tree preservation plan, it would be a whole new term and a definition of a tree management plan at a higher level, of which you would have multiple parts, and one of those parts would be a tree preservation plan for a specific project, if I understand the point and nuance that the city forester is attempting to describe.
And Director Sharp, if I could add, I, I think a, probably the best example to show the distinction here would be, so that the club has, Woodhill specifically, has concerns about hazardous trees and, and the definition of those, how those are managed. If a tree preservation plan provided exemption specific to a project, if they felt the tree was, had become hazardous outside of a, a project scope, they would still be subject to the other requirements and standards of the, the ordinance as a whole. A tree management plan that was approved and, and approved as being consistent with the stuff that we're talking about, I, I think, would, would definitely speak to that situation, which, you know, there, there would be some sort of protocol or, or standard that we agree on and say, you know, if a tree meets this condition, I think that would make sense to remove it. No need to involve the city, I think is a, kind of a basic, but I think easy to understand example for that distinction.
Chair, for the basis of your action this evening, we'll rely heavily on the city attorney for this, but if that is something that you would direct the staff to prepare, it could be part of your report in finding recommendation this evening, that we come up with a definition that fits what we described there, includes the tree preservation plan for project-specific items, and we can still move forward if the commission sought to.
For sure.
If the commission didn't, we wouldn't need to. We would just need to make sure that we included some of those specifics and are as deliberate about that action as possible, and we would help you craft some of that, depending upon your deliberations.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Sharp. Commissioners, anyone else? Before we turn to the public hearing? All right. So, a public hearing is a time for us to just listen to members of the community and their thoughts and concerns with this ordinance specifically. Any questions during the public hearing? We'll be held until the end and addressed by staff at that, at this, at that point. I think that's it. So with that said, I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and let us know if you are affiliated with, I guess that part doesn't really matter, but if you're with Woodhill, I would, it would be great if you would identify yourself as such.
My name is Brian Edmiston, and I am with Woodhill Country Club. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening, and this has been an ongoing, not problem, but situation we've been dealing with, with our golf course project coming online. There's been a lot of time, energy, and effort with our group in partnership with Forester Bennett and the city team, so we just thank everyone's partnership in getting to this point. A lot of what I'm going to share has been discussed already, but at a high level, we're seeking this exemption for three major issues. One, and probably the most important to me, is the, the safety issue. There's a risk factors to some of our trees, and then also the administrative and financial burden. Those three, all combined, are the reason we're, we're in front of you today. The other part of this is, this exemption is not unique just to Woodhill. This does impact, as we mentioned, other golf courses in Wayzata, Wayzata Country Club, but also other large land, institutional landowners. Exel Energy, Wayzata City Schools, there's some other areas that may, if not already, come into this problem that we're dealing with. So just to specify, this is not Woodhill alone, this is a, a potential issue with other similar landowners. And to speak on some of the other questions that came up, Woodhill's been around for 110 years, and in that time, it's been a, a responsible land steward. It's a certified Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary since 1994. It has member-led environmental committee advancing sustainability initiatives such as reducing plastics, energy audits, birdhouse maintenance, hiking trails, groundwater improvements. We have, with our project, $75,000 allocated to replant trees. So this is, I think, the bold underline of this is, we're not removing trees to replace hardscapes, concrete, and buildings. We're removing trees for safety concerns and replace them with grasses. It's, it's green space to green space, is what we're trying to do. And we also have, in addition to our stewardship record, pollinator meadows, natural wetlands, and a natural low maintenance, no mo areas implemented on our golf course for, for better sustainability. Sort of quickly touch on just the three big factors. The safety risk is, is one that's, again, the most concerning to me, and unfortunately at Woodhill, there's been an onsite tragedy due to a tree falling on a member and that member passing away. Additionally, in my recent time at Woodhill, we had two young girls acting as spotters for a golf tournament, and a gust of wind came up and the tree uprooted and landed very near them. The, the situation did not become worse than that, it scared them, but it could have been a lot worse under, under different circumstances. We also have large trees with branches falling near seating areas and near members, and they're just, they're, they're concerning when we have to bear the liability of that as, as club operators. And with the, the current assessment that, that Forester Bennett mentioned, these have to pass an occupancy rate, that we just, it's really hard for a golf course to, to achieve that mark due to its seasonality and no nights. You know, it's, people golf during the day in the summer in Minnesota, so the seasonality of that is, also plays a factor. So we have some trees that over, go over our putting green surface, and it has some dead and dying branches, and it likely is on its way out soon. We had an arborist do the safety risk factor to that tree, and due to the occupancy rate, it was not deemed exempt in this code, so we'd have to basically pay up to $36,000 for the removal of that tree. However, it was deemed unsafe, it just didn't meet, meet the occupancy code, which is challenging. We can't take it down without paying a fee, yet it's, the safety risk was identified in the risk factor, it just didn't have enough people under it at all times to rise to that occasion of a, a safety risk. So these are concerns we get as operators, our grounds team, our buildings team, myself as a general manager, that we get from members, concerns from some of the trees on property. Lastly, I'll touch on the other two, administrative and financial burden. Again, our property in Wayzata is over 70 acres, that's over 5,000 trees in this tree preservation plan. We'd have to document, record, and with this replanting, that's over 200 trees. We'd have to plant, grow, make sure they mature. That, that's a full-time job, and to have an arborist onsite is something we don't have on staff currently, so that's an additional payroll expense of up to $70,000 to manage this tree preservation plan in the current ordinance. It, it's, it's pretty intense for a property of our size, and this, this ordinance makes sense for residential properties, but it challenges large residential, or large institutional landowners, I should say. Lastly, it would take away from some of our staff, our current staff's duties of responsible managing the building and grounds of our golf course, they'd take away to, to manage the trees on property with this amount of replantings. So again, I think the big thing we see is, we are not alone in this exemption. We've looked at other city codes and how they handle this, and Edina is one we've looked at frequently. They, they exempt golf courses for this reason. There's some other cities in the area that also have exemptions for different, different ways of green space to green space, like I mentioned, or for other agronomy uses. So there, there's some things we've touched on that it's not unique, it's not a unique request. This is one we've just, it's come to challenge us in a way with our, our project upcoming. But open any questions, and thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Brian. Director Sharp, do we have anybody online?
Chair Cameron, at this time, there is no one online wishing to speak.
Perfect. Anyone else? Would like to speak? All right. With that said, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I have a question. May I?
Absolutely. Commissioner Severson.
So if I, if I recall back when we were putting this tree preservation ordinance together, I thought there was a part in there about diseased, dead, and dying trees that they don't count? Can you elaborate on that? And, and why, why does it matter how many people walk under it? It only takes one person to walk under it one time to fall and have a tragic situation?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, you are correct, they, dead diseased, dying trees are exempt from tree replacement. However, getting into the nuance of when that meets, whether they're dead, dead diseased or dying, sorry, I'm mixing that up still. I'm going to defer to the city forester as I'm trying to bring in some additional language.
I'm actually going to read it right here. It says, dead diseased, dying, or hazard trees as determined by the city forester prior to removal.
Yeah.
That would require Bennett to go out there and deem it dead diseased or dying.
Sometimes they, they require inspection, sometimes a picture, sometimes, every situation's a little bit different. But... But to answer the question about occupancy rate and how hazardous trees defined, I'm not sure where that would, you'd find that in the chapter currently, but we do defer to something called the Tree Risk Assessment, which is a standardized risk assessment process developed by the International Society of Aboriculture. That, it's a tool that the industry and insurance companies and big agencies use to assess risk with trees and try to come up with an objective way to define that, which can be really hard to do. So we wanted to incorporate that tool because it, our hope is that it helps alleviate some of the disagreement that does come about from, not with golf courses specifically, but just in general, you know? Because sometimes, especially the bigger trees, if it were hazardous, it doesn't require replacement versus if the other way. I mean, it can be a big financial difference, and so we kind of wanted to simplify that a little bit. So the, you asked about occupancy rate, that's one piece of this matrix that, you know, you have occupancy rate, you have the condition of the tree, and all these other things that are combined, and it spits out this risk level for the tree.
Chair, one additional point of clarification, as I know that it had been an item that had been on planning commission discussion. At this time, the city council directed staff to only bring forward amendment that would apply to golf course. So as you can see through the red underlined text on this, golf courses are explicitly noted. Additional land, large land owners may be studied in the future, and this may act as a model for future ordinances in that living document that I had referred to earlier. But at this time, in the interest of expediting the request, the only land use that is identified is a golf course. Additionally, what staff just, with the help of the city attorney, were, was able to draft, and I would note that this applies to any of the three conditions, I've displaced it under the first one for expediency, is with the additional recommendation that a tree management plan as defined by the city forester be added to the administrative option. Again, with amendments, you could place that under any of the three.
Yeah, and Chair and Commissioners, I'd just clarify that, you know, if, I think your conversation around that and what the city forester brought to light too, as he was looking at this with you, I think that's a helpful thing that we unearthed. And so, you know, if you agree that it is, then you can, whenever you make a motion, you can just say you'd have that additional recommendation of adding that terminology of tree management plan to that administrative option. And then what we would do between now and the time it goes to council is work with the city forester on getting that language in, be very, very much consistent with what that discussion was if you decide to make that recommendation, if you feel that makes sense.
It's an additional recommendation, not a recommended one based upon the discussion this evening.
Hey Bennett, question for you. Are you aware of anything that Wayzetta Country Club is doing with the trees on their property as part of their remodel?
Yes, yes. So their timeline goes back a little bit further, and it does involve, you know, quite a bit of grading, as you can see driving by, but much of what you're seeing there is in Orno. A lot of the work that we worked with Wayzetta Country Club on involved, Jesse Trichka's actually here, he's from Wayzetta Country Club. He and I were looking at some work with the parking lot, reconfiguring some of the, that stuff up by the tennis courts. So yes, there was some tree replacement discussed there and some plantings that they've done across the street primarily along the practice area and stuff like that. I'm not a golfer. Is that a practice area? So yes, to a lesser extent.
Okay.
We have been involved, yeah.
Okay. And Brian, question for you, just in terms of, I assume what your guys are proposing is kind of something similar to what Wayzetta is doing, where you're going to do some reprofiling of the course itself? Yeah, you can go over there, that's fine. And then, you know, so like when I think about, when I think about it, right, I think about, you know, in my own mind, right, it goes to, it's probably like a longer-range plan that you guys have been working towards and working, you know, putting together, right? This isn't something you decide suddenly one week you're going to do this, right? So maybe, can you talk a little bit about like what that long-range plan is and when you, and time horizon for that long-range plan too?
Sure. Yeah, so the long-range plan is actually, what's very interesting about our club, we have the original 1915, when the club was originated, we have those original, Donald Ross was the architect of the golf course. We have his original drawings, so you can see what the property was way back in 1915 when Woodhill was established, and there's aerials at that time, there was no trees on the property. So those trees we're looking to remove now because they've had their, they've had their good life, they lived their life, and now they're starting to be dead or dying. Woodhill planted them, and now is, Woodhill's looking to take them away because they've just outgrown what their purpose was. So our intent is to bring the golf course back to that original 1915 drawing. That's the intent of this, and some of these trees are actually safety concerns, the ones of the putting green I mentioned, but also because they visually block where golfers can see where they're driving the ball and where another hole connects, they can't see golfers behind it potentially, and they might hit their ball over not knowing there's golfers there. So these are other safety risks of just the sport of golf that also helps with some of these tree removals, and where we're looking to position also some tee box to relocate because drivers have hit the ball further. Technology and sport has gotten, they can drive the ball longer, and now they get closer to some more populated areas. Our pool and our golf pro shop heavily used by families and kids. So there's a lot of different reasons for some of these safety risks, not just the tree dead or dying, but what they're doing to block us from advancing or moving a tee box back or having cleaner lines of sight for golfers.
Okay. And so like timelines in terms of, like, when you guys think about long-range plan, are we talking like five years, 10 years, 20 years? Like, what is that?
Yes, thanks. This project will commence next month, so July, we're looking to start this project. It's about a year-long project, this golf restoration, to go back, but the tree plan on our property is going to be ongoing. We're going to look at new places strategically where we can replant and have a plan with our building and grounds team, as well as the, our board of directors, board of trustees, to develop where the trees can go in a way that advances Woodhill. The members at Woodhill love the tree canopy. They want, they don't want that to go away. Removing trees for this reason was, we had a lot of discussions on that, and we want to grow that canopy back. That's why we've allocated such funds, $75,000 to replant trees on campus. It's just, we would like the freedom to choose where those get planted.
For sure. And so last question for you then. You obviously have, I think, a lot more property in the city of Wayzetta than Wayzetta Country Club does, but how are you navigating that relationship across jurisdiction with Orno? Or does Orno just doesn't, flat out doesn't have anything that restrictions on your, that part of your property?
Currently, Orno does not have a tree management plan.
Okay, got it. Cool, thank you. I guess before Brian leaves, anybody else have anything for Brian? All right, thanks, Brian.
Can I ask another general question?
For sure. Commissioner Severson.
So what's the threshold, or what triggers having to come to this? One tree, 30 trees, a percentage of trees, so they have one, or Wayzetta Country Club, or someone has a tree that they need to take care of? Is it just like, it's okay to do that, or what's, what's going to, like, put them into this process?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, I'll defer to the city forester on this, and ordinance already currently defines that.
Yes, thank you. So there are a few different thresholds, I suppose. There is, at the most basic level, city's involvement with a project or a tree removal is at the permitting level, so a tree removal permit is--
For one tree even.
For one, for one tree, yeah. If it is a standard growth tree, at least six inches in diameter, and it's not dead dying, diseased, hazardous, there are other exceptions. Right now, we have an open-ended permitting process for ash removals with certain contractors because that's basically all they're doing right now. There's other nuances, but that's kind of the most basic level of our involvement. But then, once we start talking about replacement requirements in two scenarios, one is if any heritage tree is removed. So a heritage tree is by definition a healthy tree of a certain size and species. When those are removed, regardless of anything else that's going on with the property, trees, the project, anything, we're really just looking at the removal of that tree and assessing the replacement requirements accordingly. And then beyond that, some of the smaller trees, which would be considered significant if they're healthy, those are trees generally six to 25 inches in diameter. Those require a certain amount of replacement if the applicant crosses a removal allowance. So that is basically a 25 or 10%, depending on the project, of the total tree inventory on the property, is their removal allowance for that project. So 10 or 25% can be removed according to the plan without any replacement requirement. Anything beyond that does require some amount of replacement that, again, is backed by a, an escrow or needs to be mitigated by a fee in lieu of tree replacement.
So I'm just gonna, I'm going to throw this out here, I think, you know, just based on, and I recognize that what we're talking about tonight is, and the language specifically revolves around golf courses, right? But I think, you know, the intent was obviously to be open-ended enough and flexible enough that this framework could be adapted for other larger parcels in the city as well. But specifically, right, what's, in front of us this evening is, is language around golf courses. I think hearing and learning some about this, you know, I think my, like, my initial reaction is, I don't know that I'm totally comfortable with allowing city council the, just that they can freely grant an exemption at their whim. I think I would be much more comfortable that they would, that the city forester would be involved in any kind of discussion with an entity, right, in this golf courses, right? So whether it's a tree preservation, a tree management plan, right, and I think language is important, so when I think about preservation versus management, the way we've got preservation defined, I think a preservation plan is a short-term plan, right, based around kind of a development, whereas a man, tree management plan to me says it's more of a long-term plan, right? It's like, this is kind of where we're going and what we're doing, and this is our vision for, for our trees and our property, right, and our land use. So I think, like, pulling that back and pulling that back together, right, I think that, I'm okay with city council having the power to grant an exemption, but I think it needs to be done in consultation with the forester rather than just blanket. So that's my personal thoughts. In terms of the second piece, number 936067, right, trees on golf courses that are removed pursuant to a tree management plan approved by the city forester, so I change that language to say management, and then I would, obviously, I think we'd have to have a definition of what a tree management plan is as well. So those are my thoughts. So I just wanted to, needless to often, open the discussion. Love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of in the same, in the same line, which is why I asked the question about variance, right? Because, you know, if the, if it's set and they find out that it's not workable in a situation, there's a way in which to mitigate that by coming here and then ultimately to the city council, right? But it keeps the city forester involved and the knowledge involved. As we, as we look forward, Joe's Two Cents, whatever that's worth, that and $4 will get you a cup of coffee at a coffee shop. I look at golf courses very different than most of the institutional, other institutionals. I mean, their, their job is to keep a very beautiful landscape, and that's what they sell as a big part of what they do, right? Which may not necessarily be the true, the case for many other large institutional organizations. So as we look at this for a golf course, I think it, I think it makes great sense. I think when you, when we, when we come up with the terminology around a management plan, some of the considerations that this gentleman was talking about in terms of, of tree removal that, that maybe doesn't meet the occupancy or safety of the golfers, which isn't going to be in a normal plan, so on and so forth, right? I think, I think that can very well be crafted within the management plan where it, where it makes sense to look at the way they use trees and landscaping slightly different given, given what they do. So my, my view is, would be to have the tree management plan as it, as we define it, include some of those items considering it's for golf courses, and I would personally say to strike the, the other one, that kind of goes to the, to the city council without going through process.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Looy. Sure. Commissioner, please.
I think staff and council did a great job of putting this all together, and I actually like having both of the exceptions in there. I think it's a little bit of a checks and a balance. Certainly with item number seven, we rely heavily on our staff and our ordinances that we have, and then also having, you know, the ability to go between, to council gives us a chance for any other consideration or any other public hearings. So I think they both, I'd like to include both as a checks and balance. I do believe it aligns with the goals and intentions of, you know, our city tree preservation ordinances, aligns with our comp plan, and applies only to our golf courses, so I'm in support of this, but I would like to see both of them on there, again, with the language that we're identifying of the definition of tree management.
So just for clarity, when you say both, do you mean there's, there's two separate paths, or I, that I have to go through both of those steps?
No, one or the other.
One or the other, okay. I thought that's what you meant, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, so I would have both in section A and in section B.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, please.
I agree. I think Woodhill's been proactive in working with the city forester, and I think it makes sense to have both on there and continue that good working relationship.
Thank you, Commissioner Anthony.
I'm not so much an either-or, I'm a one or the other, and I think the one that I would lean towards is section seven under 936.06. If I had to pick one, I guess I'm trying to think of the ease from an applicant standpoint, also what I think is probably the more appropriate path would be going to the forester and having a tree management plan versus getting an exemption or getting an approval from the city council. I feel like, kind of like what you had said, but the city council, I don't know that they are experts in tree management or in the dead disease dying, like, I just, that's a lot to put on them to make that decision, so I would, I don't, I don't think it's an either or. I think it's for sure seven, and if we want to add on, then also you have to get approval from the city council with that. I would be okay with that, but I don't want to see a path to just go to city council. I think they have to go through the city forester and have some kind of tree management plan. If we are going to ask them to go to city council, I would rather not than the city council make that decision without input from, from the city forester.
Thank you, Commissioner Severson.
Yes.
Chair, and Commissioner, I don't want to overcomplicate your discussions, but I just think it's good for us to think about all the options, and you're doing that now, and, you know, I've almost heard this said by various commissioners, and I think even you, Commissioner Severson, just now, is that, that if council does have that option, that they have to essentially consult or get the recommendation or have the city forest review it. I mean, we could-- I mean, we could, you could recommend that, you know, if there is a council option, that council, after consulting with the city forester, blah, 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 you know, so that staff isn't cut out of that decision by council. They're not bound by it, their staff is not making the decision like the administrative option, but council gets that input. I suspect they will anyways. That's the way council works, that's what we would tell them to do as staff.
This council today works, but, right, you still want to protect in the future.
Sure, no, but, but you could, you could actually hardwire that into the ordinance, if, if that was a concern. Just thought I'd point that out. We, we actually talked about that, is staff as an option, so it's, it's there.
Bennett, are you all right with that increased workload?
With the two golf courses in town?
Right, yeah. Anyone else?
I'd be fine with that, adding that language into section A.
Okay. Perfect. Sounds like we may at least have some semblance of a majority. Yeah.
I have no idea what that sounds like.
I'll take, I can take a stab at it, because I think that, that's kind of where I was sort of leaning, right? Like, and so I think I would say the motion to approve the draft, to take the draft planning commission report recommendation with the following modifications, right? So number one would be create and define a tree, what a tree management plan is. Number two, change the language in number seven to be tree management plan instead of tree preservation plan. And number three would be the inclusion of the city forester in the administrative option with the city council, right? So the city foresters' participation and insight into any administrative action the city council will take. Yes?
And Chair, if I could just offer some clarifications and make some questions. So, so the council option would be a council option, the staff would be the administrative option. I, I hear you say that, that council option should include the council.
Sorry, yeah, I got it, I got it backwards, yes.
That's why, I just want to make that clear for the record, that, that's what I, I assumed. The other thing is, and this might be a question, good question for the city forester, but I think, or I would suspect that we would want both a tree preservation plan and a longer-term tree management plan when the forester is evaluating a project for a golf course. So in other words, I don't think we need to change the language of seven to tree management plan and take out tree preservation. I think it can be both. One being while, you know, while the project is being done, while the trees are taken out and installed, we've got that preservation plan, you know, with the parking lots being modified or whatever, tee boxes are being moved. But then, that'll be done when everything's installed. And then there's a longer tree management plan over the life of these, of the plantings. Is that fair to say?
I, I think so. And I will say too, and I don't want to insert any definitions here and now, but, you know, in general, the tree preservation plan applies to projects where a building, a building permit or land disturbance permit is being pursued by the applicant. And no matter what the requirements are here with, with chapter 936, those types of plans are going to go through Director Sharp and his staff and myself. And so if there's ever any concerns, you know, that require special considerations from staff and any project-specific stuff, I mean, that'll come out on a case-by-case basis, regardless of what is included in their, their management plan. I mean, those are conversations that are, are going to be had, so.
I don't know if the motion's open, but I want one clarification. So if we include both the item in A and B, does that mean that a tree management plan is not required?
Chair and Commissioner, I think it's required for the administrative path, but not the city council path. I think what I heard in that motion was that council needs to consult with the city forester, who may recommend a plan or plans, but council doesn't, is not bound by the ordinance if, if the case is otherwise made.
Thank you.
Did I misstate that?
No, I don't know that you misstated it, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay. I'm going to withdraw the motion, just so we can start over and, and be clear on it all, since we've had, I mean, good discussion, right? Like, but just be clear. So bringing it back to discussion then, are we saying we want to have a tree management plan as part of any council action as well?
My, my opinion would be you have one path, which is, I mean, so I would say it would be the, either a tree preservation or management plan done by the city forester, or that plus then approval by the city council. That's what I would say.
Okay.
Versus giving council the option to do something and maybe include staff and maybe include the city forester.
That's, could you, okay, and I, because I think one of the things we had talked about was creating a path where council could do something, but that would also require, I mean, would require some sort of tree plant, right?
What, does anyone, I guess I would ask, would anybody feel comfortable having a, a council option where they don't seek a tree management plan? And they make that decision on their own?
That was my point. I, I think there should be a plan in place independent of, of whatever path goes forward.
Commissioner Plan.
Yeah, I had a question for staff then, I thought that was part of the application process.
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Plante, for the council exemption? Or as a reviewing the project, that it does what Bennett said? So the tree management, sorry to confuse things, but maybe I can help with a quick summary. The tree management plan is not yet defined. It's the higher level, total site impact, not project-specific. It is lifetime of site. There's the tree preservation plan, that is already required. That is the terminology that for a specific project has a finite life. It is that project that you are doing for that timeframe, and it's closeout, and then it's three years of return. So two different timelines, two different definitions. The tree preservation plan would be required, but if council were to provide an exemption from the entire tree preservation ordinance to a specific site, then that would exempt them from all of the tree preservation ordinance requirements. That's what item, the item under section A would propose. The commission has discussed adding the consideration of the city forester in that review process, but Commissioner Severson's point has not stated that a specific tree preservation plan would then also be required, because that's what's currently required by the ordinance, and what they are part, and part of what the ordinance exemption is seeking to exempt them from. Because that tree preservation plan is part of the identification, the escrows, et cetera. Does that help provide a little additional clarity?
So by adding the tree management plan to the council, section A, it's bringing us right back to number seven?
To doing section seven. That, that could be an understanding from the definition that we are proceeding on.
Okay.
And if a...
Another way to, to put it, if, you know, if you add a plan into the council path, you're just actually kind of making it harder for an applicant, I think, because then they also, you know, instead of getting the city forester's approval, they can go straight to council, but they, they still have to do all the same stuff, they still have to pay all the same stuff. So the idea as council directed staff was, well, look, we, we want applicants to be able to come straight to us, make their case, and if they make it, then they're exempt from all the financial and other administrative requirements of the tree preservation ordinance. And, and they, they also said, yeah, and having, but having an administrative path, which might be less burdensome, because it could be quicker, if they present a plan in, you know, under our clarification from the city forester, would be a tree management plan, not just preservation plan, they wouldn't have to pay or provide the replacement requirements that the ordinance requires. They'd have to do some other paperwork, they'd have to present a, a good plan, a good management plan, but they wouldn't have to pay all that money. And there might be more ability to deal with the, the safety issues too, that were raised in the, in the discussion. Is that fair, colleagues on staff? Yeah?
I lost the thought, sorry.
So then I might be persuaded to cut council out of it altogether and just have item number seven, and take the A red line out. Why the face?
Chair and Commissioner, you know, I, I appreciate, no, I, I hear you on that. You're in the uncomfortable position of having a council that's directed you to consider this. So, you know, I think if, if you and your colleagues feel that way, I think council will want to know why, you know? So, you know, what your concerns would be about giving council that authority and that discretion. Because again, I think they're reacting to what, what you heard from, from one of our public comments from Woodhill, you know, the, those, all those things that they're concerned about, the, the safety issues, the financial issues, and, and I think council heard those things, and they, they want to make it happen quickly. And that, that was, I think, their feeling. Is that fair to say, Alex?
Yes, City Attorney, that is a fair characterization from my understanding of being present at the workshop. At the same time, they did direct you to study this. So this study is, I think, going to be useful for them to be able to determine how they evaluate this as they move forward. So long as you are clear, I, I believe that that is a useful discussion point for council.
Yeah, so I think, and I, when I kind of let off the discussion, I, I think my, my discomfort with council is, and not involving the city forester, I, I hear the expediency piece, but I think my discomfort with council and not involving the city forester really revolves around, I think, John, you said it, right? Like, that's not their job. You know, their job isn't to manage trees and manage forests and know trees, right? Their job is to be an elected politician, for better or worse, right? And that's kind of a side job, right, for, and they have a day job too, but, you know, they don't, and, and council changes, right? So people on council will change, and who's on council today may not be on council in two years. And so I think that that, you know, my, my goal, right, would be to, without putting undue burden on you, Bennett, or, you know, my vision at least, would be that whatever happens needs, needs to involve the city forester, or, you know, some element of that, because that is their job, right? That is their profession, and they're good at it, and they're not, and they have a deep pool of knowledge around it, at least I assume you do, but take care of your word. Right? But that, so, you know, I think, when I think about that, right, like, that's where I would want to have the city forester involved in anything that's going on. And, and I totally understand the burden on you guys, right, the golf courses with some of this, because it's an additional step. But I think it, it sounds like there's been, you know, there's been a good partnership established already with some of that, so.
From, from my standpoint, I think it's, it's good, good process, good, good policy for the golf courses to put down a plan that indicates when they think they should, when a tree should be coming down, because of what criteria, which may be different than the criteria that's currently in the tree preservation, whether that's for safety, whether that's for due to line of sight or due to distance, whatever the case may be. I don't think it has to be burdensome in terms of what that plan lays out and why, and if there are, and if there's something that doesn't fit into that plan, there's still a variance process that would get the city council involved, and the city council could make a decision based on that. So for me, it, it feels like it's, it lays very well with the, with the city forester's view of, of what should be in a management plan. And I would think the golf course probably has some of those things today, they, they may or may not be written down, but when they're looking at the trees and thinking about those things, they, they probably have that knowledge within their, within their four walls. So that, that's, that's why I looked at it the way I did.
I'm just wondering if, if sentence two of that two-sentence paragraph on top would then be amended to say council will require a tree management plan as part of the process?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Al, is that a question for staff?
I'm asking the, my colleagues, would that, would that be an appropriate place for that, or?
I think it become, it becomes a circular reference then, at that point, though. Because if you say, so if I'm a, if I'm Brian, and I come before city council and I say, hey, we want an exemption, here's our tree management plan. If you look at what number seven says, trees on golf courses are removed pursuant to a tree management plan. So that would just, I could, I could have a tree management plan and just completely bypass city council at that point. Or are you saying that we take seven out of that, and it has to go through city council?
That's what I was suggesting more.
Okay.
So they would have to go to a city council with a tree management plan?
The applicant would have to go to the city council with a tree management plan. They would have the exemption, but, you know, they've got it, it's certainly written in their plan, where they plan to remove trees, replace trees, I mean, it's all there, I'm sure. It just should be part of what is presented. I mean, otherwise, they could come for an exemption and just strip the, the land barren. I mean, couldn't they? I mean...
Well, they'd have to get, if they had a tree management plan, it would still have to be approved by the city forester, right? So you're saying it would be a checks and balance, it would be the city council and the city forester, not just the city forester? But it's a little more burden on the, on the applicant slash golf course, though.
I don't think it's an unreasonable burden. They're being exempted from a huge, you know, cash burden, and what, you know, like I said, they've already got the plan. They know exactly where stuff's going to be removed, stuff's going to be planted. I mean, wouldn't they, wouldn't the city want to be privy to those, to that plan?
Yeah, that certainly would give city council oversight onto that, if that's their concern, is they want to have, they still want a path where it comes before council.
Am I making any sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Or is that just goofy? I don't...
No, I mean, I think, I think I'm with you. I think either way, there needs to be a tree management plan. So whether than that it goes right to approval, and you don't have to get city council, or you have to then take that management plan to city council, those, I guess, those are the two path options for me, not option one to go to city council or option two to have a tree management plan. I think either way, I'd want to see some kind of tree plan in there.
I mean, if the goal is to provide an exemption of a tree preservation plan for golf courses, that's, that's a pretty blanket statement. It's an exemption. I don't know why it would need to come to us, unless a variance were involved, but if it's just a flat-out exemption, and it can be handled by the council, why wouldn't we just do that, requiring a tree management plan? I mean, I worry about the process getting long, it gets here in front of this group, and then people are nitpicking about where trees land or don't. It's like, it's not our job either, but it happens, and...
No, and for sure, though, I think the way that, the way that it's written today, right, it's written more for individual landowners and development. right, it's written more for individual landowners and developers on a much smaller scale, right? When you're talking about thousands of trees, it's a totally different order of magnitude.
Should I take a stab at it? No, sorry.
I was going to ask our City Attorney, is there a different way to write the exception on part A? Where counsel may impose any condition on such exemption that it considers necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, or as directed by?
Well, Chair and Commissioner, yeah, Chair and Commissioner, you know, I, I think, I think to capture what we were talking about earlier there, you know, the edit I might do is just, you know, add in something about counsel, you know, may grant, after consulting with the City Forester, an exemption for such property, so that they're required to get input and consultation from the City Forester, who would presumably say, oh, they've got a great plan, I think it's great, or they don't have any plan, they're going to clear-cut stuff. So it would require another step there. That's probably the tweak I would do there, because when, by giving counsel the ability to impose any condition necessary to protect health, safety, welfare, they could say, well, one of these conditions is this plan you brought to us and we think is great. So as long as you follow this plan, that's the condition, because that will address safety of your golfers and people on the property will, you know, preserve the welfare of the city by this lovely land you've been managing so well for 100 years, you know. That's what I think we, at least I was contemplating with that condition, and that's throughout our zoning code. Counsel, when it has the ability to impose reasonable conditions, it's usually tied to things that go to health, safety, welfare, or the effects of what they're granting. So that's the logic behind that piece.
I think the other, I think the other thing I think about, management plan, right, consultation with the forester, whatever, right, but how do we, like, when I think about a golf course and all the trees on there, how do they, how do we make it so that they don't have to come get a permit or whatever every year, every winter, when they're, if they have dead trees or dying trees, or trees that are falling down or whatever, right? Like, reduce that burden, because that, I think, when you think, when I think personally, when I think about the scale of it, right, like, that would be the tough part. It's not, hey, we want to remodel, but it's the ongoing, every day, every year, annual maintenance part that, you know, there's, there's a huge burden there for them today.
Yeah, Chair Cameron, if I could, I, I would say, I know we don't have a definition included here for a management plan, but to me, I think a very important piece of a management plan would be addressing what we would normally be looking for through the permitting process. So a management plan would serve as a replacement of those permitting requirements.
Yeah, okay.
I do, too. I like that. Because you're right, to Commissioner Van Loy's point earlier, and we have two premier clubs in our city, that it is in their best interest to have beautiful grounds, and it is in their best interest to keep those grounds nice and tidy and attracting the caliber of member that, well, certainly we and WISID want to have. So there's a bit of a trust factor that we have with your clubs, that we want to make sure that, you know, we're also supporting you in taking down some of those barriers. But I like what you said, if we're already going to, if we're going to give you an exemption, then I don't think these are overdue burdens or overly restrictive burdens, hurdles to clear, to get, you know, to get that exemption from the overall tree preservation ordinance.
So the real open question, right, is whether or not they just go through a plan on, on seven, or whether they, we have the language described enough in section A so that they go to the city with the, with the advice and of the City Forester and the City Council. Doesn't necessarily require them to have a plan in order to relieve them of the tree preservation ordinance requirements, right? And from my standpoint, given the size and scale of, of those property owners, I think a plan would be, should be effective, should be in place, that we would take a look at in order to relieve them of the tree preservation. Everything from permitting when taking down trees to having different definitions of what risk stands for.
So I wonder if we, in that language, in that first section where it says owner of the property may seek and counsel may grant an exemption from such property from the rules and regulations of this charter pursuant to a tree management plan. You add the, those four words in that, and then you don't need to have a seven. Then it's baked in that you're coming to counsel with the tree management plan.
Right, that would be, the counsel is the one that approves, gives them the exemption as opposed to it just being administrative.
Then it doesn't mean that counsel's approving something without a tree management plan, and counsel then is also approving it, so then that puts them together.
Yep.
So I think I just heard you guys say that you want, you want it to come through counsel. They have to have a tree management plan, and it has to be approved by counsel. Is that correct?
I think that's what you said. Be okay with that.
Tree management plan is with the City Forester, yep. So that would be built in consultation with the City Forester. Yet to be defined what exactly it is, but I think roundly, it feels like he's got a pretty good idea of what he wants it to be. Yes.
Chair, I would just, you know, make the observation that if you, if you keep the first path, the counsel path, and you add in a tree management plan that's presumably maybe approved by the City Forester, then I'm not sure what you get with the second one down there.
You wouldn't get anything.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to go to counsel. That's not, nothing, because some councils might be, no, we don't like your plan, and that would be tough, but the City Forester thinks it's great. So I suppose, you know, there would be some reason to save it, you know, if we added the long-term plan to that, too. That would, then in my mind, I'm just trying to help you understand all the nuances and permutations of the options you're talking about. I think leaving that administrative option just means, like, they could potentially not have to go to counsel, I guess, would be the, the added benefit of that, or the less burden, less time. If the City Forester sees the plans and they're good, they're done, so.
And I think that's what we're saying, we don't want it to happen, right? We want them to go to counsel also.
Right, that was my point, that was my, why, the question I asked, right? Because I, I think what I heard you guys say, or you say specifically, and I think Commissioner Van Loy, you agreed with her, right, but I heard you say that you wanted them to have a tree management plan and then also have it be approved by City Council.
I think, my, my point is, I believe they should have a tree management plan that's approved by the, the City Forester, which would be number seven. If, if the rest of the council believes that a tree management plan should always go in front of the council, I would be okay with that. It's only a couple of, it's only a couple of organizations that this would apply to. It wouldn't be a big, huge burden to the City Council to look, take a look at it.
I feel like we need to leave number seven in, in case we have an applicant that, or two applicants, do not want to go in front of counsel, or do not need to go to counsel. Give us the applicant two avenues to get this done. One is through City Council, and we would like to add something about a tree management or preservation plan, or the eyes of our City Forester on it, or they can go through the replacement requirements and what trees and entities and land uses are exempt from that. And we're clearly saying number seven, I mean.
So then my, no one's going to go to City Council if the option to not, too, right? I mean, I.
They still have to meet the obligations under number seven.
Right, I think what we're saying is up top is that if they're going to counsel, they have to get a tree management plan. So then now the two options are counsel with the tree management plan or just the tree management plan, in which case I don't know why an applicant would ever go to the City Council if they had a tree, you know what I mean? So like, do we want them to have to go to counsel or not?
I don't think they.
You don't think, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know, like, I feel like.
Oh, I was just saying, in my viewpoint, I wouldn't think that they would need to have the plans in place if all the plans are being reviewed by our City Forester and advising under protect the public health, safety, and welfare, they can go that route, or they have to go through the route of number seven.
I think what we were talking about earlier was if they're going to counsel, we don't want counsel to have to approve something without them having a city or a tree, a tree plan. So then the question is, do we want them to be able to go without going to getting counsel approval, or do they have to, do they have to do that? I don't have a strong opinion either way.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding how they would, how is it determined whether they go through the administrative process or through the counsel? Is there something that is lacking in, you know, in one approach and they're directed this way, or?
Chair and Commissioner, it would be up to, the way it's drafted now, and even with the tweaks you're talking about, the applicant would have the choice, well, actually three choices. They just, golf course could comply with the ordinance the way it is, or they could seek counsel approval or administrative approval. The administrative approval would evolve the tree preservation or tree management plan, and the approval of the City Forester would be the decision-maker there. If the applicant went to counsel, the way it's drafted, the City Forester wouldn't have to be involved, but in all likelihood would be involved, because counsel would want staff's recommendation on that. That's the way almost every council decision has input from staff, and sometimes a staff recommendation. So likely, but not required, the City Forester would weigh in, and he may recommend a tree preservation plan. But again, the way it's drafted, that wouldn't be required either. But then counsel would be the decision-maker, not the City Forester. And they would have the authority to approve it or not, under a different standard than the City Forester. So there would be a difference there, there would be a difference.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I would say, then, let's take the decisions out of it. Let's just say, if an applicant wants to come with a change to the tree preservation ordinance, they have to go to the tree preservation plan, and then that gets approved by City Council. So I would make a motion to do that. So I guess revise that language up in this upper paragraph. So the motion would be to say, counsel may grant an exemption for such property for the rules and regulations of this charter pursuant to a tree preservation plan approved by the City Forester under section 936.
Chair, one piece of clarity, I believe you're meaning management plan, not.
Yes, sorry, a tree management plan, yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yep, so then that would be the way for a golf course to get exemption from the tree preservation ordinance, and then stripping out that number seven. Is that an appropriate, acceptable motion, Counselor?
Chair and Commissioner, I would just clarify, you know, your, your, your motion would be to adopt the draft report and recommendation that staffs prepared with, with the changes that you articulated, I think, but that's assumed.
Yes.
If that sounds good, yep, and that's part of your motion.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Severson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Elg. Further discussion?
Further discussion, Chair. I'd just like to clarify that what would be changing there is we would be adding, we'd be striking the language in the draft ordinance in number seven under B, that would go away, and we would be adding language to that section A at the end, the addition language there, to add that, you know, the property owner must include a tree management plan that's been reviewed and approved by the City Forester. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that's what we heard.
So, and so the intent of what I hear you say, what you just proposed, just so we're all clear, right, is that they would have to have a tree management plan, and it would have to be approved by City Council?
Yes.
And then they would have an exemption such that follows, allows them to follow, oops, allows them to follow along their management plan for the duration of that management plan?
Yes.
And Chair, just so I, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. It would be a tree management plan that's been reviewed and approved by the City Forester?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So process is create tree management plan in consultation with the City Forester, City Forester approves it, get on the docket for City Council, City Council approves it.
Yes.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, okay. Further discussion?
Were you agreeable to seconding that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. With all of the clarification.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly.
Chair, you might want to take a roll call vote on this, I just want to make sure we're accurately tracking everybody here.
Yeah, yep. Director Sharp, would you please take a roll call?
Commissioner, Commissioner Ankeny.
I agree.
Commissioner Planton.
Nay.
Chair Cameron.
Nay.
Commissioner Severson.
Aye.
Commissioner Elg.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Loy.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the draft report and recommendation will be on the consent agenda.
Actually, Chair, this will go straight to counsel now.
This will go straight to counsel? So this doesn't go to consent?
Right.
I suppose, because it's not, it's public hearing, but it's not.
Yeah, you adopted the report and commission, report and recommendation, so for the benefit of the viewers and those in the audience, this will be on the next City Council meeting along with the, well, I don't know if we'll have the minutes, but staff will convey the substance of this conversation.
Not the council meeting tomorrow, though?
No.
Okay, so two weeks or whatever the, one after that is? Okay.
So I'm curious, do you, either of you want your nay comments added to the record?
I think I said them. Yeah, I think it's more so just on the replacement requirements, you know, up above talks about other things, and the rules and regulations of the entire chapter, whereas number seven really is just truly under section D, which is replacement requirements.
And I think for me, it was, you know, I was really just, I don't know that City Council needs to be involved in it. I was totally comfortable just having the City Forester approve the plan and going from there, so. All right, moving on then. Next on the agenda tonight is other items. Director Sharp.
Thank you, Chair Cameron. In the review of development activities, we've hit the traditional summer lull. We haven't received a significant number of new building permits. There are a few house permits underway right now. We are still looking at 641 Lake and different steps that can.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Members of the public, I just wanted to thank you all for coming tonight, for taking the time out of your evenings, and for your contributions. Sorry.
Great comments, Chair, thank you very much. Still working with 641 Lake, there are additional steps that are being taken to provide additional pedestrian connectivity in that area. It is a project that's underway, we've got our building official working with the applicant on that on a regular basis. You may see something on an upcoming council agenda, whether that is direct financial pieces to make that pedestrian area open again, or whether that is just through staff resources that's still being evaluated and worked on actively with the applicant of the property. Planning Commission meeting schedule, at this time, your, next meeting is July 7th. I don't have set items for that meeting, so you may be able to go on your long holiday. But we will see what comes forward. There are some items that have really tried to bring, kind of compile a project and bring it forward, so we'll see whether we're able to do that, but by this Thursday, we are hitting our public hearing deadline dates, and so we will know by the end of the week. Your next City Council meeting is June 17th, so tomorrow evening, and we have a fairly full agenda on that one. and we have a fairly full agenda on that one. Understood. So Chair Cameron, Chris Planton, our planning commissioner will be attending as the council liaison tomorrow evening instead of Bonnie. We do, one of the fun items that we will have on that one for other committees that the planning commission may be interested in is we'll be awarding our centennial homes tomorrow night, which are homes within Wayzetta that have been retained, and I should say, or commercial properties, that have been retained for 100 years. And so we've got several of the property owners that have stated their intent to attend the meeting, and we will be doing that in that public forum section towards the beginning of the meeting. So you are all welcome to attend. With that, no additional development activity updates.
New police chief sworn in tomorrow night, too.
Excellent point, thank you, Chair.
All right, anything else from anybody? May I have a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Planton, may I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Ankeny. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the June 16th, 2025 meeting of the Wayzetta Plan Commission is adjourned.